2020 to order. And if we could have a roll call, Sandy?
Councilmember Shippers?
Here.
Ellen Bass?
Present.
Ingalls? King?
Here.
Mayor Philkins?
Here. This time, we will need a motion to approve this evening's agenda. The motion will need to include the amendment that's been made. Would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. This is Councilmember Shippers. I will make a motion to approve the agenda as amended to add the minutes from the regular meeting held on October 19th, 2020, under consent agenda. We're previously on the special meeting agenda.
I'll second that, Ellen Bass.
Councilmember Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls? King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries. At this time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask if you are going to speak, that you let us know your name and that you please keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Mayor, before we get there, I should have mentioned that each of the council members need to state for purposes of the minutes that they are attending the meeting virtually and from where they are doing so. And by that, I don't mean specific address, I mean city and county.
Okay, all right, we can do that. I'll go ahead and start. And this is Mayor Philkins, and I am attending in the city. Councilmember Ellen Bass?
In the city of Cadillac.
Councilmember Shippers?
In the city of Cadillac.
Councilmember King?
In the city of Cadillac.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, we'll go ahead and open the floor for public comment. Not hearing anyone, we'll close the public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. This evening on the consent agenda, we do have the minutes from our regular meeting that was held on October 19th, 2020. Would someone like to make that motion?
Councilmember Shippers, I will make the motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes, as I stated in the beginning of the meeting.
This is Councilmember King, I'll second that motion.
Councilmember Ingalls? King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, this evening, we do have a couple of public hearings, and so I will turn it over to Marcus to take us through those.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Good evening. We do have two public hearings this evening. One is with respect to amending Section 10-2 of our code related to recreational marijuana establishments. And the second is with respect to amending Section 10-3 of our city code regarding medical marijuana facilities. As they were introduced to you at your last city council meeting, this really is relevant to giving the opportunity for us to reissue notices to advertise for the licenses that are currently available for folks to apply to. And with that, while we do need to give each of these hearings their own special hearing separately, Mike, if you could perhaps provide just a couple of comments to provide sort of an umbrella understanding as to what we're amending.
Yeah, so these, as you might recall, are amendments to both the medical and recreational or adult use sections of the city's ordinance. And they really do two things. The first would be to allow the city manager to open a new receipt period and establish deadlines for application for those establishments for which licenses remain available under the limitations imposed by the city. So there was not a provision before, under the ordinance, that would have, it certainly would have allowed city council to do so. But we thought that amending it to provide an administrative review period or submission period for licenses that nobody had applied for would be more efficient to do. And so that's the first thing that these amendments would do. The second thing is to amend your ordinance to bring in line your ordinance with LARA's practices and procedures regarding Step Two applications. And so we had a provision in there before, if you may recall, that would have required the submission of the Step Two materials within 30 days. LARA really has since changed their guidance and their practices. And so what we're proposing is to establish the specific step of the application for that state operating license within 60 days after receiving a certificate of occupancy for those premises. That should allow enough time to make those submissions to both LARA and then to the city as well. And again, these are similar for both medical and adult use.
So Mayor, at this point, I would suggest opening up the first public hearing.
Okay. At this time, we'll open up the first public hearing for public comment. Hearing no one, we'll close public comment and move to any conversation that the council may like to have. Okay, no conversation. Is there anything else then on that, Marcus, that we should know?
Not at this time.
Okay, awesome. So would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, Ellen Bass, make motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance to amend Section 10-2 of Chapter 10 of the Cadillac City Code, recreational marijuana establishments.
This is Councilmember King, I'll support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls? Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, then we'll open the public comment for the second hearing. Seeing and hearing no one, we'll close public comment if there is any discussion among the council or if someone would like to provide a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance to amend Section 10-3 of Chapter 10 of the Cadillac City Code, medical marijuana facilities. Ellen Bass?
This is Councilmember King, I'll support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls? King?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries. Next thing that we have on our agenda this evening are some communications.
Yes, it's being recommended to approve the display of the lighted garland banner from November 23rd, 2020 to January 4th, 2021.
Councilmember Shippers? I'd like to make a motion to approve the display of the lighted garland banner from November 23rd, 2020 to January 4th, 2021.
Ellen Bass here, I'll second that.
Councilmember Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls? King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries. And this evening, we do have a couple of appointments. One appointment and I believe one reappointment.
Yes, it's being recommended to approve the appointment of Shannon Hamner to the Corridor Improvement Authority, Cadillac West Resort Area, for a four-year term to expire on November 16th, 2024.
This is Councilmember King. If there's no discussion, I would go ahead and make the motion to approve the appointment of Shannon Hamner to the Corridor Improvement Authority, Cadillac West Resort Area, for a four-year term to expire on November 16th, 2024.
Shippers?
I'll second that. We're on the same wavelength.
Yeah, we are.
Councilmember Ingalls? King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
It's also being recommended to approve the reappointment of Joseph Baumann to the Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on November 16th, 2023.
I'll make a motion. There you go.
This is Councilmember Shippers. I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of Joseph Baumann to the Planning Commission for a three-year term to expire on November 16th, 2023.
I'll second that, Ellen Bass.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls? Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries. And that takes us to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. This evening, we are honored to have with us the Equalization Director and our own assessor, Joe Porterfield. Joe's going to provide some information regarding the Gold Standard Award that was received. Joe, if you can hear me and unmute yourself, that'd be great.
Thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Great.
Okay. First, I want to apologize. I think some of you may know, my wife and I have three young men living with us, so we're in the process of moving our office. So I'm a little bundled up because where we're putting it doesn't have heat in it right at the moment. So bear with me. Anyway, we were acknowledged on October 21st this year by the Michigan Assessors Association. Wexford County was labeled as the gold standard, as I'm sure many of you know, this year. For their scores, almost every unit got perfect scores on their audit of minimal assessing requirements. And Cadillac was one that did get a perfect score. And the Michigan Assessors Association, at their meeting on October 21st, presented the following award. And it says, I'll read it, "Certificate of Achievement: The Michigan Assessors Association acknowledges the city of Cadillac successfully passed the state tax commission's 2019 audit of minimum assessing requirements. Wexford County assessing units established the AMAR Gold Standard of Success." And it's dated October 21st, 2020, and signed by John Dahlquist, 2020 MAA president. And I'll make sure that this gets to the city and you can display it where, in a place down there for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mayor and members of the city council, thank you again, Joe, very much. The next item on the agenda is in regard to bids and a recommendation for the inductively coupled plasma mass spectrometer device. And so for those of you that don't exactly know what that is, like myself, I had to verify with our utilities director. The inductively coupled plasma mass spectrometer device is a spectrometer that performs metal analysis for both our water and wastewater systems. This is a device that is necessary due to the EPA lowering the limits of metals allowed and now the subsequent need for us to no longer be able to use the atomic absorption machine that previously was used to measure the metals in our systems. So that machine is now obsolete for our purposes, which is why we need to acquire this specific unit. Bids were solicited, and the lowest bid, and also the recommendation this evening is to go with Agilent Technologies Incorporated out of Wilmington, Delaware. The lowest bid, which is their bid, came in at $101,550.41. It's also recommended that at the same time, we add to the purchase an integrated cover kit for an additional $439.98. None of the bids included that kit. That would bring the total amount to $101,990.39. Funds are available in our water and sewer fund. The fund was budgeted for an appropriation of $150,000 for this particular device. And this purchase was not frozen pursuant to our pandemic financial response plan due to the critical nature of what it does for our systems. Our utilities director is on the line. Should there be any more technical questions for him as well?
I have a question, it's not very technical. What does it do, Jeff?
It does our analysis of metals in the water and wastewater. Right now, we were using the atomic absorption machine, and you can do a furnace method or you can do a flame method. But with the EPA wanting us to go to a lower level, we had no room to go lower with the atomic absorption machine. With this one, we'll have, we have plenty of room. Even if they lower the levels again, we should be able to get to lower levels. So it just tells us how much metals we have in our water or wastewater.
Thank you.
Yep. This, Jeff, this sounds like something that will cure COVID. Is that true or false?
I cannot speculate on that at this time.
No comment, huh?
Got to keep my options open.
And I just, I want to also add that Jeff's department, all of the things that you need to do your work, they all have amazing names. It's like something from a science fiction movie. Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
Ellen Bass, I'll make a motion to order the purchase of an inductively coupled plasma mass spectrometer to Agilent Technologies, Inc., in the amount $101,550.41, and to add the purchase of an integrated cover kit for an additional $439.98, resulting in a cost of $101,990.39.
Nice job. I'll support that.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Oh, yes.
Ingalls? King?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The next item on the manager's report doesn't require any action by council, but I am required to report out regarding an emergency purchase that we had to make. This is in regards to the boiler having a catastrophic failure at the community center. The community center, perhaps, is more commonly known as our senior center. It's the former Naval Reserve Facility and is also home to other tenants as well, including Up North Arts. Because of the urgent need, given, you know, the season that we're in now, and it's going to continue to get colder, we had to press ahead and acquire a new system. We did solicit quotations, and you'll see in the communication, we reached out to four different companies. We were able to receive two bids. We moved forward with the advanced mechanical bid, which was the lower of the two. And they're in the process of putting the new system in. As I mentioned, there's no action for council to take. Once all of the project billing has been received and everything is up and running, ultimately, we will need the council to amend the budget at some point to show the incurrence of this unbudgeted expense. And the expense was $16,224.39. Any questions before I move on? I don't want to gloss over anything. Okay. Moving on, the next item is with respect to North Flight and Mobile Medical Response, and the need for council to consider this evening assigning the agreement that we have with North Flight to Mobile Medical Response. And as you'll see in the communication, North Flight is the current company that the city has an agreement with. And that agreement is also in the public agenda packet as well, for the provision of emergency medical services, or EMS for short. They're currently in their final stages of merging with a nonprofit called Mobile Medical Response. And that would then require the agreement to be assigned. There's actually a clause within the original agreement, within paragraph 12 of the original agreement, that requires assignment to be approved before it happens. A copy of the assignment agreement follows the communication. All other terms and conditions within the original agreement will stay in place at this time. And the recommendation this evening would be a motion of support directing the city manager to execute the assignment agreement between the city of Cadillac and North Flight, Inc., for firefighter staffing services to Mobile Medical Response.
Does anyone have any questions? Or discussion? And if not, would someone like to make a motion?
It says, Councilmember Shippers? I'll make a motion to support directing the city manager to execute the assignment agreement between the city of Cadillac and North Flight, Inc., for firefighter staffing services to Mobile Medical Response.
Ellen Bass here, I'll second that.
Councilmember Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls? King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. Moving along to the next item, Trailhead to Cadillac Commons Project Update. Due to concerns related to the spread of COVID-19 in the community, the in-person special meeting of the city council scheduled for earlier this afternoon at 3:30 at the Cadillac High School Oratorium was canceled. The date, time, and manner in which the rescheduled meeting may be held will be called and posted in compliance with the Open Meetings Act in the future. My assumption at this point is that we'll be looking at having that meeting sometime after December 8th, which is currently the date in which the current health order expires. So I would just kindly ask everybody to stay tuned. With respect to the final item on the manager's report this evening, it's the COVID-19 update. I do have some interesting statistics I'll share briefly. At our last meeting, there were 2,047 total positive cases that were reported. However, as of this afternoon, on the 16th of November, the total positive cases is now 4,746. Note, though, our last meeting was approximately a month ago. Additionally, the total number of deaths within District 10 went from 30 a month ago to 59. The total positives within Wexford County over the last month since I last reported out went from 128 to 371. The total number of deaths, as an aside, within Wexford County from a month ago to today, went from four to 11. In terms of recoveries, those numbers also went up significantly. Previously, there were 1,441 a month ago. And as of today, there were 2,108. And I'm not sure if that number is jiving with the total number of cases, but that's what I copied from the district health department site. Maybe I copied that in error. I do have also, it's showing 98 total recoveries within Wexford County to 126 in Wexford. And certainly, I would encourage everybody to visit www.dhd10.org for details. So again, www.dhd10.org for details. Further along, yesterday, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services announced an emergency order regarding gatherings and face masks that go into effect on Wednesday, November 18th, last, as I mentioned a moment ago, until December 8th. Due to the order, city operations are going to start adjusting accordingly to try to limit as much in-person contact between each other and between the public. However, our public counters, the finance counter, which is our main counter at City Hall, the police department counter, the utilities counter, they're all going to remain open and accessible to the public, unless, of course, due to illness or other reasons that would require us to close our facilities to the public as a whole. Right now, we're just not at that point. A lot of business transactions, it's important for me to note, can be done online. And I would encourage anyone that's interested in looking at doing so to visit our website, www.cadillac-mi.net to check us out. And that concludes my updates regarding that item in the city manager's report.
Okay, thank you, Marcus.
Thank you.
The next thing that we have on our agenda is to adopt a resolution to introduce an ordinance. So Marcus, would you like to take us into that?
Sure, thank you. Now, this evening, we have a resolution that introduces an ordinance amending the city's zoning ordinance regarding pedestrian sidewalks and bike parking and sets a public hearing for December 7th. This already went through the public process at the planning commission level. Their recommendation is now for us to proceed. Our step this evening would be to set the public hearing for December 7th. But John, if you could, please, perhaps, go through the very top of the communication that basically summarizes what this is about.
Thank you, Marcus. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. This resolution to introduce change to this zoning ordinance involves amending the city's zoning ordinance regarding pedestrian sidewalks and bike parking. The principal reason for the ordinance amendment coming forward at this time is one of the final steps in completing our redevelopment-ready community certification process with the state of Michigan. Specifically, the adoption of the ordinance would satisfy evaluation criteria 2.1.5, which is one of three evaluation criteria the city has left to complete. At present, we are 98% complete with the RRC certification process. Becoming RRC certified is an essential step in maintaining grant eligibility with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. Maintaining our grant eligibility with MEDC will be critical for continuing to undertake redevelopment projects in our downtown. A second reason for us to be bringing this ordinance amendment forward is to meet many of the entries that we have in our master plan, which are addressing walkability and non-motorized transportation. The state, their principal goal for asking us to approve this ordinance is to improve non-motorized transportation. And there were a number of different ways we could have done this. I chose what I thought were the two least intrusive on business and probably were the least costly in terms of satisfying the state's criteria and also then not putting too heavy a burden on the business community in Cadillac. Thank you.
Okay, does the council have any questions for John or Marcus? And if not, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance amending the city's zoning ordinance regarding pedestrian sidewalks and bike parking and set a public hearing for December 21st. and set a public hearing for December 7th, 2020.
Shippers will support that.
Councilmember Ingalls? King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries. I just want to say that Councilmember Ellen Bass and Councilmembers Shippers are doing a great job of supporting one another tonight.
Not just tonight, Mayor.
Always.
Same wavelength.
Okay, next on our, next on our agenda, um, is that we as, uh, council members have, uh, the minutes and reports from several groups in our packet this evening. First, the Planning Commission, then we have the Downtown Development Authority, the Cadillac Wexford Airport Authority, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. At this time, we'll go ahead and open the floor for our second public comment. Not hearing or seeing anyone, we'll close public comment and move to the good of the order if anyone has anything this evening.
T.I.?
Thank you, Councilmember Ellen Bass. Yes, I do. Um, with, uh, first of all, I, I just want to encourage our community to do what you can to stop the spread of COVID-19. And I know we're talking Thanksgiving next week, and in my family, what we've decided we're doing is what, when, when my husband was a boy, they were in India. And so for the holidays, they would write letters, handwritten letters, and we're going to pull out some of those letters to look at them from a long time ago and remember the loved ones that were here before. We're also going to write letters to each other and talk about what about, how grateful we are for each other, and how much we're, we're willing to do what we can to keep each other safe. So I encourage folks to find new traditions just for this year, if necessary, but to find ways to be grateful and, and celebrate one another in the safest possible way.
Good idea. I, I was saddened to hear that the Christmas in the park, probably necess- necessarily so, has been canceled, uh, due to the COVID, uh, such a, a neat thing in small-town life, people coming together to light a tree. Um, let's hope next year, wear your masks, if there's a vaccine. Let's, uh, keep our fingers crossed and we'll be back to normal and be lighting a tree next year. Thank you.
I'd like to.
Can, can I, um, pee back on that? What if, um, we reach out to the community and, you know, have people put up their Christmas lights around their houses? What if we use our Facebook page and maybe the paper to pick a date, maybe that date, for people to all, at the time that we would light the Christmas tree, turn on our porch lights and turn on our, our decoration lights altogether, so we can still feel like a community coming together, but not have to gather in the park?
Yeah, just to make things easier, I, I believe the light is going to flip on dark on Friday after Thanksgiving, if that helps, if you want to plan something like that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Right, and I was just going to, uh, give a shout out to Ken Payne and his crew. I see that the lights are already up. I don't know if they all are, but I saw a li- a lot of them. So thank you, uh, for doing all of that work again this year. I think it's going to do everyone's heart, uh, hearts good when those lights flip on the day after Thanksgiving. So thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, I will pass that along.
Thank you. Okay, if there's nothing else, then, um, we will need to go into closed session this evening. So if someone would like to make that motion?
Councilmembers Shippers, I will make a motion to go into closed session. Let's see. Wait, where is it? For what?
It's at the bottom of the agenda, closed session?
On this other page, just a minute. I'm sorry, I should have let Councilmember Ellen Bass do it. Okay, motion to adjourn to closed session for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of collective bargaining agreements, and to consult with the city attorney to discuss trial or settlement strategy in connection with pending litigation in the matter of Donald W. Cubitt as next friend of Donald B. Cubitt the Fifth. Uh, City of Cadillac Police Department at all. U.S. District Court, Western District of Michigan, Southern Division, case number 1 colon 20 dash C V dash 01084, because the discussion in public would have the detrimental effect on the litigation or settlement position of the city. I'd also like to invite Todd Kiway, Human Resources Generalist, and Adam Jepka, Director of Public Safety, and Owen Roberts, Director of Finance accordingly.
I'll second that extra-long motion. Oh, the long one.
Councilmember, Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls? Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries.
Mayor, this is, uh, Mike Comer. You'll see, um, on, uh, the video tonight, Laura Genovich from my office is, uh, joining.
This is Councilmember King, I'll make the motion to take us back into open session from closed session.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls? King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, um, thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. At this time, uh, it would be appropriate for me to, uh, report to council and subsequently request a motion of support, uh, for the consideration of approving, uh, two collective bargaining agreements. Uh, one with respect to our police officers and a second with respect to our, uh, police command officers. Uh, the, uh, highlights I'm going to share are the same for both units, uh, with the one exception that the police officer contract, uh, is now with the Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council, Michigan branch. Uh, they did switch out of the Police Officers Association of Michigan, um, uh, Union to go into the, uh, what's called the FOP. Uh, the highlights include, uh, new hours of work flexibility obtained from management, uh, reduction of number of hours permitted for union association leave, uh, additional $100, uh, per year for their clothing allowance to specifically assist with the purchase of boots if desired, uh, a reduction in personal property reimbursement amounts, uh, and the type of items permitted to be reimbursed, uh, a concession by the union to accept new health premiums, uh, equal to non-union personnel. Uh, and, uh, last but not least, uh, an annual wage increase of 2.75% uh, for each year of the agreement. And as I mentioned, uh, before, uh, those highlights are the same for both, um, uh, both collective bargaining agreements. Um, uh, at this time, it would be appropriate, uh, for council to consider a motion, um, authorizing, uh, the mayor, uh, to execute both, uh, collective bargaining agreements as presented.
This is Councilmembers Shippers, I will make that motion.
I'll second it, Ellen Bass.
Councilmember Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls? King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for your time. Stay safe out there. With that, we'll adjun- adjourn the meeting. Thanks, everyone. Thank you.
Bye.